Let's take some more after.
Want to take a picture with Kewanna?
Yes.
Thank you, in recognition of Memorial Day just yesterday, I want to honor all of our servicemen and women in military, in all branches of service, and especially to those that are heroes no longer with us. And I also want to recognize all those that are veterans here in our chambers. If you could please raise your hand. Thank you so much for your service. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Manny?
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Protem Montero?
Present.
And Mayor Vargas?
Here. Thank you, ma'am. The first item tonight is a presentation. Mayor Protem Montero, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys have a great weekend and a merry weekend, yesterday. So, do we have a representative from the Dodgers here? No? Who can still read this proclamation, Vaughn? All right. Okay. Mr. Bowie. Come to that podium, please. Okay, so I'm going to read the, because on the 17, on Saturday the 17th, we have this great event at the Jim Thorpe Park where, you know, we reveal these two beautiful Dodgers' dreams, thanks to the Dodgers Foundation. So, I think if you see the pictures, you will see what I'm talking about. When I'm reading, just pay attention on the pictures, okay? Don't pay attention to me. So, this is the seat of Hawthorne, a proclamation to Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation. The Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation has demonstrated a longstanding commitment to the community empowerment you develop and social equity through sport, education, and health initiative across Los Angeles County. The Dodgers Foundation has generously collaborated with the seat of Hawthorne to renovate and revitalize our charitable Jim Thorpe Park baseball field, transforming them into vibrant community asset now distinguished as the Cursor Challenge Field Number 64 and 65. These new inaugurated Dodgers' Dream Fields serve as a safe haven and source of pride, offering our youth and families enhancement opportunities for physical activity, learning, and personal growth within environment, with environments designed to address social disparity and promote community well-being. The Dodgers' Dream Fields constitute unique, inclusive, environmental, and extend beyond recreation by providing education program, health service, and holistic support directly within neighborhoods. And now, therefore, the seat of Hawthorne, City Council commands, and express our profound appreciation to the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation for their exceptional contribution and steadfast dedication to the youth and families of our community. Proclaim, there was the 17th day of May 2025, and signed by all of our council members and great Mayor Vargas. So, it was a beautiful day, and those fields, you know, like the, all the new billboard, scoring billboard, new grass, new bleachers, and duck, you know, a lot of beautiful things. Those, those parks look like exactly like the Dodger Stadium in the seat of good neighbors. So, we want to thank you, thank you very much. And I want to say, our staff, Community Service Department, Kewanna Bowie, Kevin and Michael, and all the staff, and our city manager, you know, did an outstanding job that day, and we got a lot of families having fun. And it was, it was a beautiful day. So, thank you, thank you, because I know it took a lot of time, a lot of dedication. And precisely, you know, the Dodgers Foundation and the Cursor Fields, it was also a partnership with other nonprofit entities. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, all about our hearts. Thank you.
Let's take some more after.
You want to take a picture with Kewanna?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Need some people to stand down.
All right, and in, three, two, one. Stay right there. Let me take a few more. Three, two, one, and three, two, one. All right.
Oh, they look like they were. Let me just acknowledge. To the chair. Thank you. Let me just acknowledge all the hard work that the city did in the efforts to bring Dodger Phil, Dodger Phil to Hawthorne, right? It just really elates my heart, just seeing the pictures from families and children, especially, that participated, all in their blue. I think, like all Californians, Dodgers are our team and favorite. And so, it's just good to see that we have a dedicated Phil in the name of the Dodgers, and hopefully, all those that live here in Hawthorne, play and work in Hawthorne, will take advantage of the Phil and in its entertainment. So, thank you so much to staff, Kewanna, and everyone out there that helped in, in bringing this, especially Department of Public Works, and all of those that dedicated themselves to the work. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Next, we have a presentation by the Police Department. Captain Eric Lane will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, city staff. We'd like to give a brief update on the Police Department's partnership, and the city's partnership with Sharp Performance, who is a coaching and wellness platform for our city employees. Sharp Performance was founded in 2022 with the initial intent to help first responders with professional coaching, mental health training, and wellness. The techniques implemented by Sharp Performance were initially implemented in the United States military for military members who are returning home to deal with difficult stresses and difficulties from their deployments and transitioning back to home life from abroad. The skills that were trained to these military members, they found would help first responders as they return home daily from the jobs and careers that they have. In 2022, the city implemented Sharp Performance in the Police Department first for our city, or police employees. The classes at that time were geared towards first responders, and the idea was to create mental health and wellness for officers and staff that works inside of the Police Department, based on the type of calls that they go to for service. Over time, however, we realized that these classes and coaching would help all of our city employees, specifically because the classes and the training are geared towards work performance, teamwork, productivity, and stress management. Last year, the city implemented this training platform for the entire city staff, full-time employees. Let me try to move to the next slide here. So, the platform utilizes your mobile phone. And on the mobile phone, there's three different sections that you can use. You can do online coaching, which is a 30-minute in-person coaching session with a professional coach. It's confidential, and it's geared towards work performance, your well-being, as well as teamwork, and what you can do to be better at your job and at your home life. The second part of it is online training classes. There are three- to five-minute mental focus classes that you can do that help supplement the online class that you had with your coach. And then the last part is our resource tab. We worked with our HR department to put all the city resources for our employees on there. So, whether it's your health insurance, your dental insurance, your eye insurance, or any other type of resource you might need, it's specifically geared towards our Hawthorne resources for our employees. Lastly, the coaching techniques that are on here, they're all professionals. Some are military, some are professionals in business, city government, law enforcement, fire department, nursing, and you can pick your own coach. Once you're on there, you can decide and train how you prefer to be, what you want to work on. So, some people want to work on leadership, some want to work on promotion, others also want to work on just day-to-day quality of life issues. This has helped supplement our quality of life for our city employees, as well as giving them an outlet to talk to somebody confidentially about issues that they may have. Lastly, I want to kind of show you a utilization rate for our employees here. So, it's all confidential. However, it does Lastly, the coaching techniques that are on here, they're all professionals. Some are military, some are, uh, professionals in business, city government, law enforcement, fire department, nursing, and you can pick your own coach. Uh, once you're on there, you can decide and, uh, train how you prefer to be, uh, what you want to work on. So, uh, some people want to work on leadership, want, some want to work on promotion, uh, others also want to work on just day-to-day quality of life issues. This has helped supplement our quality of life for our city employees, uh, as well as giving them an outlet, uh, to talk to somebody confidentially about issues that they may Lastly, um, I want to kind of show you a utilization rate for our employees here. So it's all confidential, uh, however, it does track the amount of utilization that's used by our employees. So in the industry of mental health, there's obviously a stigma around, uh, mental health, getting help, counseling, um, if you're in need. So the way that the profession, um, tracks what a successful program is, is only one to three percent utilization. That is considered a successful program in most entities, which if you think about that out of a hundred, that's, that's anywhere from one to three people that are asking for help, or we know a lot more people may need assistance. Uh, I wanted to show, share with you here in our city, we actually have one of the highest utilization rates. We have twenty percent of our employees that are using the coaching and over almost sixty percent that are using the app on their phone, whether it's trying to find resources that they may need for their family or for their health, or if it's coaching, or some type of, uh, application to, uh, gear themselves towards, uh, being a better, uh, employee or better coworker or a better, better family member. Uh, this program's been in place for three years in the Police Department, one year in the city, and out of the other cities that, that are using this app, we're one of the highest utilization, uh, which to me means that we have a successful program and employees that are desirous of, of this type of service and are using it, uh, which, you know, to me, when you, when you look at that, uh, it's hard to, to gauge whether something's successful, uh, especially on something that's confidential. But, uh, with this, I think the numbers speak for themselves. Uh, I would like to thank the city electeds and city leadership for this program and bringing it to our city and to our employees. And I'd love to answer any questions if, uh, anybody has any.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Captain Lane. Um, I'm just curious, uh, that's a pretty, uh, percentage in, in with regards to, you said about sixty percent performance, um, available to all workers?
Uh, one year to all workers, three years to, uh, employees in the Police Department.
Okay. Um, I, I like the fact that they're actually, um, engaging with the app, right? Seeking treatment or maybe just to speak with someone?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm curious, uh, if you're saying that we're, we're the only ones, the city, within the last three years, that is, uh, probably the only city that's probably using it the most? Uh, how long has that been happening?
So we were the first city, uh, to actually implement it for all employees. There are several cities that use it for their fire departments, for their police departments. Uh, but in speaking with employees here and, uh, coming out of the pandemic and people that, uh, we thought could use and utilize the, uh, the platform, uh, we are the first city to implement it. And quite honestly, the city employees use it more than actual the law enforcement officers do. I don't know if that's because of the stigma around law enforcement and mental health or, uh, requesting assistance versus somebody who's not a, a first responder, uh, but our city employees are utilizing it at a, at a higher rate than, than actually in the Police Department.
That's interesting. Are, are council members, uh, are they able to use it?
They are all full-time, uh, electeds and also, uh, full-time employees, uh, in the city, uh, department heads all have access to it, yes. And it is confidential.
That's good to know. I, I, you know, oftentimes, um, for elected officials, well, we're humans too, right? We have, you know, our own personal feelings and thoughts and aside from the politics, if you will. At the end of the day, we, we walk, talk, just like anyone else. And if anything, I think, um, we probably, just like the pastor mentioned, probably have the, the mind running a hundred miles an hour trying to figure out whether or not we did the right thing. But I think something like this would be also helpful, uh, just to be able to, you know, um, talk to someone, right? It's not, it's not, talk to someone that doesn't know what we do or who we are, right?
Uh, yes, ma'am. And so one of the benefits to this is it's, they're coaches. So it's not, you're not seeing a psychiatrist, uh, you're not, uh, you're not going to counseling as much as you're, you're being, uh, trained professionally how to deal with some of these, uh, issues in life and, and you have somebody to bounce ideas off of, yes.
I like that. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Captain Lane. Uh, that data, right? It's possible to, to know how many females, how many males, the age?
So I'm sure that Sharp Performance has that, uh, information based on the way that they, uh, analyze what's happening with who's requesting. Uh, however, as leadership, as a city, um, getting too much down to the information begins to, uh, potentially violate the trust of your coworkers, your, your, uh, your employees, uh, because you do want to have amenity, uh, some confidentiality and the trust that this is really for the employee to ask for help, uh, and to get help. Also in the resources, there's other, uh, hotlines. There's, uh, like the suicide hotline, the, uh, if you need, uh, police to come, there's other numbers in there, uh, if you want different resources other than just the coaching. But yes, I'm sure there is data that's out there on who's using it, but we just wanted to show the utilization, uh, to prove the success rate of the actual program.
Okay. Well, I think, i- it's there anything that they could give us, you know, send a feedback to say, the city, why you guys need to improve A, B, C, D?
Uh, yeah, so actually, uh, we're actually trying to reroll this back out to city employees again to increase utilization. Uh, we're gonna, inviting them out to go on ride-alongs with city staff, with the Police Department, uh, and actually the coaches, not the leadership of the company, but the actual coaches, so our employees can get one-on-one relationships with actual coaches and then from there be able to continue that program, roll it out. Um, but the, the number one thing is getting people to access the app, uh, immediately so they onboard it and then feel more comfortable to use it. The longer it goes, uh, without somebody utilizing it, the less likely it is, like any app on your phone, eventually, you know, times out.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
To the chair. Um, I actually, you guys were kind enough to show me the app when I came through on my orientation. And, uh, being a veteran who suffers from PTSD, it's very difficult to talk about. And, um, the app makes it easier. The coaches make it easier. You're not quote-unquote talking to a psychiatrist with the stigma that goes along with it. So, um, I, I appreciate this, this app and the value that comes with it. So thank you for doing that for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. We've had a, we have a, we have a, uh, item three, which was pulled and we'll discuss that, uh, at a later time. That was the city clerk record organization and retention. Just mentioning that for the purpose of, uh, reporting that to you. Madam Clerk, can you read the guidelines for oral communications?
Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from, from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Pat Donaldson, please. And is this the only ones that I have? Okay, Pat Donaldson, please.
Good evening, everyone, uh, and mayor and city council and everyone in the audience. Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, I have four things. Number one is we're having bingo night, uh, which is our mixer on June nineteenth from six PM to eight PM at the chamber. Someone will win a hundred dollars, someone will win fifty, someone will win twenty-five dollars, and there'll be a ton of food. So hope everyone can come on June nineteenth. And second is, uh, our backpacks. We're going to be giving away backpacks to Corn Bloom Elementary School on August twenty-seventh at nine AM. Uh, if anyone wants to help fill up those, uh, backpacks for the kids, these are all kids that are, uh, low income. Uh, and number three is our golf tournament, which is going to be September twenty-ninth, uh, at Rio Hondo, eleven AM is registration and twelve noon is shotgun. And the last thing isn't really an announce, well, sort of an announcement, but really nothing to do with the chamber. But if, now that summer's coming up and people want to have barbecues and they need someone to cook tri-tip for them, they need to talk to Captain Port because he makes the best tri-tip ever. He made it for the Kiwanah's Club, it was so good. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to, uh, speak to the city council from a line, please?
Good evening, uh, mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, my name is Pastor Gar, uh, from Calvary of Hawthorne. Um, I was honored to do the invocation two weeks ago. And I'm here, first of all, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity. Secondly, uh, I've partnered with a, um, a drama, uh, department where we're doing a play called Dear Westmont, Can I Live? This play speaks against gang violence and gang membership. Uh, it's on June the twenty-first, it's going to be in Carson. Uh, and I want to thank the City of Hawthorne for their support. I want to thank Pat and the chamber for their support. I want to thank Pastor Greg for offering, uh, his church to allow us to do the practice. And so I would love to have you guys to come and join us, uh, because we are the difference. And if we don't speak out and we don't get involved in helping to stamp out gang violence, then it continues on. So, uh, I would love for you guys to come and join us on June the twenty-first, the Glory Christian Fellowship International. Um, I have a flyer that I will get out to you. Uh, and I have tickets available for those who are interested in businesses who would like to support us as far as helping us to sponsor some at-risk youth and young adults to keep them off the streets and to show them that there is a better way. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to come to speak?
To the chair. I was just gonna say Pastor, uh, Tremble, my old pastor.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, good evening, Ruben Sanchez, North Hawthorne Community Association. I wanted to bring up, I know they're talking about apps right now and it just dawned on me in regards of the whole telehealth ban. I don't know, I'm sure you guys are aware that, uh, Connecta has been given the free services of the telehealth ban for pretty much a couple of years from now. I sat down with one of the branch managers and they explained to me how the telehealth ban works. And it, to my surprise, and to their surprises that, uh, what I, when I told them, we're spending millions of dollars for it every year when you guys could just, uh, open up a bank account, free bank account from Connecta Federal Bank. Uh, same services, same thing that what you guys had to buy vans and spend a lot of money with. Uh, these are the, the things that the residents are talking about. These are the concerns and is either because of, uh, bad business decisions or just probably looking the other way. But other than that, the, the services are there. As y'all know, homeless or vagrants or whomever, they all have bank accounts because that's how they receive their SSI's, general relief funds, uh, all kind of, uh, money, that's where they get, they have, they have to have a bank account regardless. So instead of, uh, giving away millions of dollars for the past few years for the telehealth ban, why not just give them a free, uh, Connecta bank account? I could bring some flyers if you, you guys want. Uh, I was gonna bring them for me, maybe you guys haven't seen it. I know the, the city has dealt with Connecta for many years and it's very surprising that, uh, you guys didn't know anything about it. So something to look into. This way we won't spend all this money on just, um, things that we don't need when it's out there for free. All right, so have a blessed night. Good night.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to express themselves to the city council? If not, I declare oral communication close order at six forty. Okay, thank you. City clerks, um, city clerks consent calendar, please?
Mister Mayor, I have items, I have seven items on the consent calendar, they are items four through ten for your consideration and approval. The vote for item four will be taken separately. Item four, approval of the city council meeting minutes for the regular meetings of October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, and November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, and for the special meeting of November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Item five, approval of the city council meeting minutes for the regular meeting of January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Item six, city treasurer request approval of the warrants. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings and, of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five's agenda. Item eight, resolution number eighty-five thirty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of Cedar Avenue and one hundred and sixteenth Street. Item nine, resolution number eighty-five thirty-one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of Oxford Avenue and one hundred and sixteenth Street. Item ten, resolution eighty-five thirty-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing, approving, and ratifying acceptance of the Bureau of Justice Assistance Fiscal Year Twenty-four Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG Program Award Number One Five PB JA dash two four dash GG dash zero five zero four eight dash J A G X, totaling forty-three thousand five hundred seven dollars to be applied towards the prior purchase of automated license plate reader, ALPR equipment licensing and storage for adoption.
I'll move.
Seconded. Please vote. Was there, is somebody, uh, ma'am, somebody was gonna abstain? Not yet, for the second one, right?
Yes, for the second one.
Please vote, guys.
This is for items, um, five through ten. Yeah.
Okay. Councilwoman Manning?
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council approving items five through ten.
Okay, thank you. The successor agency, I will now recess the city council meeting and open the successor agency meeting. Madam Secretary, can you please read item eleven into the record? And then Mister Michael Mejia will provide an update.
Item eleven, resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero three of the successor agency to the community redevelopment agency of the city of Hawthorne, approving an official statement, bond purchase agreement, continuing disclosure certificate, and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the successor agency's tax collect, I'm sorry, tax allocation refunding bonds, series twenty-two-five. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the board of directors of the successor agency to the community redevelopment agency of the city of Hawthorne adopt a resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero three, approving an official statement, bond purchase agreement, continuing disclosure certificate, and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the successor agency's tax collect, I'm sorry, tax allocation refunding bonds, series twenty-two-five. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the board of directors of the successor agency to the community redevelopment agency of the city of Hawthorne adopt a resolution number twenty-two-five dash zero three, approving an official statement, bond purchase agreement, continuing disclosure certificate, and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the successor agency's tax allocation refunding bonds, series twenty-two-five.
Sir, please.
Hi there.
Your update?
Yep, so, so the, the documents or the item that you see in front of you is just an update. It's one of the last steps for us to actually execute this refinancing. And so what we will be doing is, uh, essentially refinancing, uh, debt that has, that was issued many years ago as part of the former, uh, redevelopment agency. Now, this transaction, um, or this refinancing is, is relatively small, but, but very consequential and very, very important. And the reason for it is because the actions that you will be taking, a lot of the savings, the majority of the savings, in fact, are actually going to be, uh, distributed to various taxing agencies, um, within the city's boundaries, most of them being actually to, uh, the school districts, the K through twelve school districts. So what you see there, um, the savings that we had estimated based on, uh, the last figures that were available were approximately one point one million dollars, uh, those will be, uh, finalized when we go into the market. But just to contextualize, uh, so the amount of savings that are actually going to be going through the K to twelve districts is actually in the, in the ballpark of about six hundred thousand dollars. And so given, you know, the challenges that we're seeing at the state budget, the potential impact that that's going to have on schools, the actions that your executive team have, have taken and the action that you will be taking today is going to be delivering much-needed funds, uh, to those school districts, the city as well, um, and other various taxing agencies. And so, uh, I just wanted to highlight that. Um, I think it just really shows extraordinary leadership at local government and really responsible stewardship of public funds to make sure that those dollars stay within the community, um, that, you know, again, uh, your taxpayers that you all are serving.
Through the chair.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mejia, for the explanation. What about that, uh, a hundred thirty-two thousand dollar, a hundred thirty-two thousand seven eighty-five that will, uh, it will be like, uh, a decrease in payment? It will be benefit to our general fund? That's the, the idea?
Yeah, so, so the savings that I just, uh, you know, some of the numbers that I just rattled off, right? So those are the savings, uh, that are going to be captured by reducing your annual debt service payments. And so those savings, uh, will go to the city, to K through twelve districts, um, as well as to various county entities. But ultimately, they're dollars that are of your residents that are going to stay within the community.
What I was, what I was looking at also is because-
It will be benefit to our general fund, that's the idea?
Yeah, so, so the savings that I just, you know, some of the numbers that I just rattled off, right? So those are the savings that are gonna be captured by reducing your annual debt service payments. And so those savings will go to the city, to K through 12 districts, as well as to various county entities. But ultimately, they're dollars that are of your residence that are gonna stay within the community.
What I was, what I was looking at also is because, because when we refinance that, right? Because, because the bond yields now is, it's lower than what we are paying, correct?
Yes. You will, what you will be paying is lower than what it is today, yes.
That was original.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mejia. I was just curious from your comments, 1.1 million, when finalizing goes to market?
Yes.
When does it go to market?
So at present, our current schedule has us going to market on June 10th.
And how long do we wait for a return?
So we will know, the interest rates are set on that day, but the transaction doesn't close into about, I believe right now it's June 26th. And so the savings are technically captured immediately upon closing, right? Because the new interest rates will be accruing on that day.
Okay. And those benefiting, again, are the Hawthorne schools?
Yes, so I give, I can give you the list of schools, in fact. It's Hawthorne School District, San Nella Valley Union High School District, Longdale School District, Lennox, and Weisberg. And so, again, the level of savings that are gonna be captured by each one of those school districts will vary, but the totality of those monies is approximately $600,000 as of today. But again, those, those move as the interest rates move on a daily basis, but it's a fairly good estimate of where we will be.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And to the chair.
Yes.
And just for the public, when you hear all the cities, is because Hawthorne, City of Hawthorne, we have five school district. So that is why Emmanuel Longdale said they all those, because we, we boundary our city. So we have five school district in the City of Hawthorne. Thank you.
I make a motion?
I'll second.
Please vote.
The votes are in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Voting reflects mayor and council approving item number 11.
Thank you, sir. Just a moment.
Let me just also thank council member Montero, because instrumental with regards to the schools and knowledge there. So I appreciate your information.
And Mr. Mejia, I brought him.
Yes.
I brought him when I met him in San Francisco about almost 20 years ago. Thank you.
It's good to know the connection, thank you.
You guys both look so young. I can't, I can't, I can't see that, but okay. City manager's consent calendar, right? That's where we're at? Oh, there was two? Excuse me, sorry about that. Says item 13.
Item 12.
Oh geez, man, this, this thing's off. Okay. Good Lord. Okay, thank you, guys. Madam Secretary, item 12, please.
Item 12, resolution number 2025-04, resolution of the successor agency to the Hawthorne Redevelopment Agency, approving an amendment agreement between the successor agency and Harris and Associates to provide the successor agency with various services associated with successor agency reporting requirements. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the, staff recommends the adoption of resolution number 2025-04, approving an amendment agreement between the successor agency and Harris and Associates to provide the successor agency with various services associated with successor agency reporting requirements for adoption.
I move. Seconded, please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council approving item number 12.
Thank you, miss. Next, I think we're now, now we're at the ordinances. Madam Clerk, item 13, please.
Just for the record, Mayor, can we have clarification for item number four? There was no vote for that one.
Just a moment, ma'am.
Good catch.
Wow, look at you, all right. So that's the, that's the one single item, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion, can, ma'am, can you read item four?
Yes, item number four, approval of the city council meeting minutes for the regular meetings of October 22nd, 2024, and November 12th, 2024, for the special meeting and for the special meeting of November 19th, 2024.
I second.
By the way, quick statement, I'll be closing the successor agency meeting and reopening the city council meeting. Do I, do we need to repeat that? We did, okay, but we don't need to repeat the item, right? Okay. So item four has been read into the record and I closed the successor agency meeting and reopened the city council meeting. Can you guys please vote? Thank you.
The votes are in.
Okay, good.
Voting reflects mayor and council approving item number four with council member Fay Johnson abstaining.
Okay, so we have 13, right? We haven't done that one, did we? We just did, right?
Yes. We're on 13.
We are 13.
Item 13, ordinance number 2257, second reading and ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending chapter 17.76, sale of alcoholic beverages, and adding section 17.76.030, operational standards of chapter 17.76, sale of alcoholic beverages of title 17, zoning of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and making a finding of exemption in compliance with sequel in connection therewith. Staff recommended motion, staff recommends that city council adopt ordinance number 2257.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council approving item number 13.
The city manager's consent calendar, ma'am, can you read items 14 and 19?
Item 14, resurfacing of runway 7-25 and resurfacing of taxiways and trench drain extension for Hawthorne Municipal Airport Project Number 25-06, reject and out to bid. Item number 15, sublease non-disturbance and torment agreements, re-terminal building and tea hangers assignment from Willow Vista Rentals LLC to 395 Park Place LLC. Item number 16, progress payment number five in the amount of $188,100 due to Partis Air Incorporated of Los Angeles, California for Hawthorne Memorial Center HVAC system upgrade project number 23-08. Item 17, agreement between the city of Hawthorne and Sharp Performance Incorporated for professional coaching services. Item 18, telehealth agreement fiscal year 2025, 2026, funding allocation. Item 19, amendment number one to the license agreement between the city of Hawthorne, Hawthorne Airport LLC and Northrop Grumman Systems Corporation for monitoring of wells. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 14 through 19?
I move. Please vote.
Second, sorry about that.
Go ahead. A motion has been made and seconded, you can make a discussion.
Okay.
She can pull an item right now, she just wants to pull an item for discussion.
Since the motion has been made and seconded, we could go immediately to a vote. Is that not true, sir?
Let me take a look, hold on one sec.
Yeah, it was a, it was a media misstep. I was trying to hit the button and it wasn't working.
Okay.
No, seriously, it's, I'm not, stop laughing. It's true, I was, because I wanted to pull it, to discuss it.
Okay, yeah, just, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Item number 18 for the telehealth agreement, I wanted to talk about this. One, we asked for data from them a few council meetings ago, and I haven't seen that data. Have you gotten it, city manager?
No, I have not received any additional data since the, our last council meeting.
And I believe both me and the mayor asked for that. And then, so I'm hesitant to agree with this one until we have that data. We don't even know how, how well this program is working for the city. And we did bring up an issue of them doing visits over at the Behavioral Center. That is a nonprofit that should be doing their own, and we're actually paying for those. And also, with the way that things are going nowadays, I mean, just three years ago, we didn't even have telehealth. The industry is changing, the medical industry is changing so much. I don't want to get tied up into a contract that we're gonna be, you know, if something else comes down the road that we may want to participate in and not have the funding to do so. And I think we also should be careful with our funding considering that the state is in a bind, the county is in a bind. We're not right now, it's, you know, thank God, we're right there where we, we could do better. But at any point in time, you know, the state or the city can come down and say we owe them money. And getting tied up into a $100,000 contract for mental health services that can be provided elsewhere, I think isn't a wise decision. But I would be open to a per diem where we leave it up to staff to decide when they need these services, not just give a blanket contract.
Is this structured this way? The way you proposed it? I just saw the amount, is that just the fixed amount, sir?
Yes, that would be the maximum that I'm requesting approval for, for this fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year.
Can we do per diem? Is that an option?
It's up to the council. What I'm requesting is approval of the funds to be reallocated from the campus tax, which is $100,000, to be able to create a blanket purchase order to pay telehealth. With that being said, I can take direction on how the agreement should be structured.
I'm going to, I'm gonna make a quick, if council is okay, I'll make a separate motion and second on this item so that we could give instruction. Is there a concurrence?
To the chair. There's still a motion and a second on the table that was pulled for discussion. She made her discussion, there's a motion and a second.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so for the benefit of the public, right? The telehealth event, we contracted with them with the COVID money that was given from the federal government during the COVID, right? And it was not millions of dollar. I recall that some of the contract was for $300,000 and then, you know, and that was a service that was needed in the community because of COVID. And a lot of people was stressing out, mental health issues. And we have, in a sense, been giving some data, not complete data, but some data, that they are providing service to our community. And our homeless coordinators and even our Hawthorne Police Department have specified that they provide a kind of vital service to the people that, who's needed. And we know the COVID money is ended. Basically, June 30th, we don't have no more COVID money because it's gone. So that, the fact that when we create the cannabis program, one of the mandate from the state of California is that some type of return on those investments should go back to the community. So this council voted during the budget workshop last meeting, we kind of voted to give some of that cannabis revenues back to the community to several programs. So telehealth, we put it there because we know the City of Hawthorne, we don't know how to provide mental health service. It is a county responsibility to provide mental health, but we have some individual in our community that do need that service. And to me, when they help, especially the women that have to go to court and have to show that they have some, some hours of mental health therapeutic session, have been, help these children, the mother get their children's back from the DCF, from the, you know, DCFS. So to me, it's not, $100,000 is not coming from our general funds. I repeat, it's not coming from our general fund. It's coming from the cannabis revenues that the city is gaining currently. So we would, we will mandate more, you know, transparency and accountability. And I, I agree with the per diem and then, you know, our city manager and, and the, our homeless coordinators and even our police department would put a stipulation how that service wants to be provided to our community. So I believe that we, we have an obligation to give back to our community, especially mental health is a critical issue in our city because county, the county of Los Angeles is not providing the services in our community, so we need to do something. That's my two points.
Mr. City Manager, please clarify for me, the, what we have right now is, so the cap is, the cap is $100,000, right?
Yes, sir.
Per diem is basically as needed per day, it's kind of how we're using that term right here, as needed? So up to $100,000 for the whole year is what we, we would be voting for? But as you have this structured, does the, does the indication, do you need direction from council to indicate to use this on a per diem? Or you're gonna be used, using their services already on a per diem basis? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I would need direction with that, because I did not bring the agreement as a per diem. So if we're gonna go the per diem route, I just would need clarity on what this council would like to see. Is it once a month, twice a week, three times a week? So per diem is very open-ended, so I would just need a defined request on what this council would like to see. If we don't go per diem, what we can do, we can structure his agreement where it's maybe four days a week at a certain amount. So there's different ways to structure agreements, so I just would need direction how to move forward.
To the chair.
Yeah.
I, I think it should be up to you and our homeless coordinator to decide what you guys need based on that need that day. Because things could change, we could say four days a week and then they don't use it two days out of that week. So I, I think we need to give you guys the, the power and the authority to use the program as you need it. Because we're not on the front lines. And we have, being in, in this chair, I can legitimately say I have no way of measuring it because I have no data. So I don't know what works, what's working, how much is working. I think we would have to leave that up to the frontline workers to make those decisions, that's my opinion.
So I think, I know that like we're leaving, we would leave it up to staff. I mean, I'm not super happy about the data not returning. I'm not happy with that aspect, but I know that they have been out there and doing work. So I'm sure I'd like to hear more about that, but I just like to, I just think we need to be careful as like on a, there has to be some regular, something regular about them being in the city and being here available. Because if we try to say, hey, we need you, and so all of a sudden get, get your resources together and tell your employees to just jump in their van and come over because we need this, that's just too, you know.
Last minute.
It's too last minute, so I think it has to be planned out on a more regular basis. I think on an, it needs to be determined by staff to say how frequent and establish a schedule, I think, to the best of your knowledge so that it'll make an impact.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
I agree with you in regards to last minute. It doesn't make sense to offer, we're saying as a city, we're gonna offer mental health support and then you don't know at what moment somebody's gonna be going through something and need that mental health support. In addition to that, we're talking about our police department using those services as well. And so who knows when they need to be able to access those services? And then we have, do say, who will need those services? And our Bridge of Hope home, those folks use it. So it's really, and it's really hard to pinpoint, in my opinion, what time of the day that folks are going to need those mental health services. And I just feel like whatever hours that they're working now has been working. And we have had some data, enough data that we understand. They've come to us on multiple occasions and they specifically said, a number of people have used this. A number of people have done this. We've actually had people that have come into the council to actually say, the services helped me and I appreciate that support. Again, you never know when somebody is gonna have a breakdown and they need those services. So if we're gonna agree as a city to provide those services, we shouldn't tell our folks that, well, you can't have the services at nine o'clock in the morning, you can only use the services at this time of morning. I just feel like it's too last minute to try to pinpoint when those services are gonna be used. be used. So I really think that we should continue to keep the same schedule. I think the hundred thousand is fair in terms of what we had on a previous contract, but the contract that we have is substantially lower. And you're talking about a whole year of providing services for one year and you're talking about a hundred thousand. If any of you have had to pay for any type of mental health services, you know that that is not cheap. And only in recent years that it has come clear that insurance companies pay for that. So in my opinion, I think we should go ahead and vote on what was, um, provided to us. And our city manager took the time to do the research, to come up with this information. So he's already talked to folks and came up with a number based on his information. So right now, I think we're overstepping the work that he's already done to bring this to us, to let us know what we should be doing.
The last comment I'm going to make about that is, um, the per diem aspect of what you wanna schedule for them is, uh, it could come in the form of the, having you, use them, we're thinking budget hours. Maybe we could allot seventy percent of the budget on a regular schedule, the thirty percent remaining of that amount would go towards any, uh, more impactful, focused or intense, uh, you know, response from telehealth during the week. Do you know what I'm saying? That's where the per diem might come into play, but, uh, I just think if, in a sense, if we just say, hey, we're gonna schedule them all the way consistently, then we, we're not gonna have that headroom, that extra amount to just pay them in case they, hey, man, we got like a big situation, there was a big accident here with, involved a lot of people, we need you to come so that you could, uh, people could access your services. So if we schedule it with, like, say sixty, seventy percent of the hours used, you know, that whatever the money translates into hours, we could have all those extra hours available to us in case of a emergency situation.
How many hours a week? Ten hours a week?
And, but that the city manager would be able to do that and, uh, I think he's gonna be doing that regardless. He would do that regardless. But do you understand what I meant, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, because it's not gonna be a blank check. It's not gonna be a blank check to, to telehealth. It, it have to, they have to show us that they have provide how many hours of service. So when they submit the invoice, they have to submit the, the, the hour that they did the month of, say, uh, June, they, they, they provide twenty hours of mental health and this is how much it, it submits an invoice and then we pay. But this a hundred thousand dollars is not gonna give it to them for them to provide the service. See, it has to be on a, on a quarterly invoice, for example, on a quarterly basis, how many hours that was provided service and then you release, say, twenty-five thousand dollar. And so that's, that, that's what the per diem per se, because that, you know, in, when, when I worked for clinic, that's what we used to do. They wish to submit a quarterly report and say, we provide a hundred hours service to fifty individual and that it costs that quarter twenty-five thousand dollars, you give them twenty-five thousand dollars. So it doesn't mean we're gonna give them a check of a hundred thousand upfront.
To the chair.
Yes.
There's a motion, there's a second. I call for a vote, please.
Um, who made the motion and who seconded?
I made the motion, the mayor seconded.
So under the ordinance, uh, either the person moving or the person that seconds it can withdraw the motion and have it re-discussed. Um, I take it from the, the statement made by the mayor that he's withdrawn the motion he seconded and it was being fully discussed. So under the ordinance, I, like, the, either the person moving or this person that seconds it can withdraw it for discussion and reopen for discussion.
That's what my intention was, but just to keep the spirit of what you have here already, sir, but just kinda give you, you know, some ideas on how to...
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So if there is an issue about item eighteen, we can, we can vote in all the items and then vote separate on item eighteen.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, so.
Basically.
I make a motion on all items except eighteen?
I second. I make a motion on eighteen?
I'll second.
Please vote. With the inner delineations that we had made earlier?
No.
No?
As form, as is.
All right, then, I retract my vote then.
To the chair.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I, I, I just have one question. Can you explain to me how this contract that we have here, that you put in here, what was your intent? How is that gonna be distributed? Because you say not to exceed, so are you guys gonna decide how often you need this telehealth services?
So there's two different things on the floor, so let's, let me give clarity to that. One is per diem, one is to operate how we've been operating with a hundred thousand dollar budget. So I would need to know, are we voting on the contract, as said before, with a hundred, not to exceed a hundred K, or are we gonna go in the direction as a per diem, which would change things most likely on how I would bill or how we would have this contractor work?
The thing is that if we do, do per diem, it could open it up to even being higher than a hundred thousand, because they're, they'll be submitting their, their invoice as in, it could go, it could be a worse situation that we, we didn't expect. So if we have the cap of a hundred thousand, it's just a cap. And it's, uh, but the thing is, I'm expected to get some more, you know, better data and, uh, the quarterly reports when they submit their stuff. Nothing too excessive, but just some basic numbers, right?
To the chair.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
Can we, um, maybe ask telehealth if they could, um, purchase software that would provide us information that would be feasible for Councilwoman, uh, Johnson and the mayor?
Yes, if that's the direction we're going, and I just would need to know what data we're looking for.
To the chair. We, we did give him the data that we're looking for and they never came back. The last time they were here, we told them we wanted to see numbers. Who are you, who, not, not HIPAA information, that was the excuse that was used. We can't give you that because of HIPAA. Well, I've, I've been in the medical field since I was eighteen. What we're asking for is not HIPAA data. We're not asking for names, we're not asking for anything that could identify an individual, but we need to know who you're seeing, what are you doing? What, what services are we providing? And this hundred thousand dollars, uh, when you say that we're gonna do what they were doing before, but only at a hundred thousand dollars, are we doing less of what we were doing before? Is that how it's gonna work? You guys are gonna tell them where to be and when to be during the week?
No, my, my idea was if he was working this company five days a week, we would look at the reduction of funds and maybe this vendor works three times a week, or maybe they work six hours a day. But I would need to sit down, once this is approved, I would sit down and bring it back with the agreement and that would be actually in the agreement.
Okay.
So this is just a request to move forward with an agreement. The council will still have a chance to vote on the agreement.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then one final question, because that's what, that's what I'm looking for. I want some controls put on this, that even if we decide, well, we only need fifty thousand used this year, it's not a guarantee that we're gonna have a contract, you're gonna get a hundred thousand. It's up to a hundred thousand based on the needs of the city. And when I say per diem, I'm not saying I'm gonna call them up today and tell them to come out today. You, we have programs that we run. These are not twenty-four hour programs. I can't call in the middle of the night and get Dulce on the phone and say, hey, I need, I need some suicide help. There's other suicide services or mental health services that are twenty-four hour services that are available. So we're not trying to fill a gap with this service. There's no way we could fill that gap. It's, or, or build that bridge. It's just one piece of the puzzle of everything that's available out there. And we, as a city, we wanna be responsible and do that, but we also have to be responsible with our funding and what people vote us into office to do. And that's to make sure that, you know, we have money and we project out and we get out of debt and we don't have, we're not carrying a debt load. I'm not saying a deficit, I'm saying a debt. So, um, as long as we're not obligated to the hundred thousand, in other words, like our previous contract, we were obligated to, to pay out that contract. I like the not to exceed...
Just for clarity, this council can, you know, counsel a contract anytime with a vote, so we're not married to any contract in the city. So council can direct city manager, put any agreement on the agenda for vote to counsel that contract. So just wanna make that clear. Robert, if I'm speaking out of turn, please...
Is that true? Okay. Uh, I, I, last thing I wanna say, I'm gonna support this right now, but I just think that we just gotta really be honest, guys. As critical as we are of being in telehealth, I think there's other things here in the city we could also be critical of and some other vendors and other things that we do. So I hope that we can hold all those other, uh, groups that we have agreements with to the highest standards, not just telehealth, okay?
Oh, I, I'm, I agree one hundred percent.
And, and to the chair, we have to be, uh, conscience and honesty here because we have, telehealth did present some data. The only thing that I remember you guys asking is about the number of Hawthorne residents. You want specific, uh, Hawthorne resident, but they, but they did give us number because I think, I still have the PowerPoint presentation in my office, it's too bad I didn't bring it. But they did present some data and they presented some numbers and they gave us some statistics. Now, it did not satisfy everyone and because I, I remembered asking him to do duplicated and unduplicated service, so he can give a real number, but he did present some data. The only thing that he did not ask was the, how many of those people were Hawthorne resident. So, but, but to be fair, he did give us some data at his last presentation and we do have that PowerPoint presentation.
To the chair.
Yeah, that's just...
I just wanna say that I remembered that, um, presentation was very informative, but I, I just would like for you guys to think about this. If you're homeless, wherever you are, that is your resident, right? So if you end up in the City of Hawthorne and you're homeless, you're sleeping on our benches, you're sleeping in our parks, you're homeless and you're homeless in the City of Hawthorne. You're now a resident of City of Hawthorne. So it's really hard to distinguish who is and who isn't if you're living in the City of Hawthorne as a homeless person. Just a comment.
Please vote.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
City clerk, there was a vote, correct?
No, there hasn't been a vote.
The vote was not finalized.
Please vote.
So, uh, before we vote, um, the, the item is to come back with an agreement up to not to exceed one hundred thousand, but I'm not seeing a clear directive as to what's to contain...
Everything has this.
Nothing has changed. It's to, is, is that, we're voting on exactly what Vaughn is presenting us.
Yes, it's to come back with an agreement, not to exceed one hundred thousand. That's what you're voting on.
It's up to a hundred thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
He made a motion, I made a second, item number eighteen.
I understand that. But it doesn't specify the, the details of what's to be in the agreement.
Vaughn already just told us all the details, right? He just told us that he could, he could bring the item back, right?
Folks, he's gonna, the way he designed this, the way, what he presented to us was giving us the amount. He still needs to go, it's as part of this resolution that we're gonna be voting on, he needs to go and negotiate it. So we're not doing anything, varying from anything that he's suggested.
So I have information I can take from this meeting tonight and to bring back a formalized agreement for a review.
Considerations?
Yes.
Okay, so please vote.
Just for the people to understand, even the city manager do not have authorization to sign a contract for a hundred thousand dollar. He have up to only twenty-five thousand dollars. So he have to bring that contract to us for us to, to see and sign and give a vote of confidence for him to sign, so.
Done. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council approving item number eighteen.
Do we vote on all other items? Yeah, we do.
Yes, for the record, council, mayor and council also approved items fourteen through seventeen and item nineteen.
Thank you. It's important to realize that we have a telehealth service that other cities don't have and, you know, and they're starting off and not everything's gonna be perfect. I have concerns. Um, I, I have been ultra critical and I think we should be, but I just, like I said, we should also be critical of other, other things that we have going on in the city as well. So, um, this is one of them and that's fine. Uh, we just, you know, we wanna make sure it works for us, for them and for our residents, right? Discussion action items, number twenty.
Thank you, mayor. Um, as part of our ongoing efforts to foster, uh, regional and international relationships and promote cultural exchanges, it is imperative to select a sister city. Um, we had mentioned this, uh, some time ago, I can't remember exactly, but I do remember, uh, council member, or Mayor Protem, uh, Montero and, uh, Councilwoman Johnson mentioning, um, that we should get a sister city. So I wanted to bring this back up because I, I had an opportunity to meet with, uh, LA twenty-eight and they had mentioned that they had, um, a sister city partnership with Culver City. Culver City, I think their sister city is New Zealand. And so I wanted us to bring that back up and, and, uh, really think about working on, um, having a sister city for the Olympics and also, um, for the World Cup. We have tremendous, um, opportunities in our city. We have a lot of amenities that those folks can use. Um, I had an opportunity to talk with, um, our school board and they are very much interested in partnering with the city, um, so that, uh, they could use, um, their facilities. They have a beautiful campus that should be ready, I believe, next month for graduation. Um, and so those are opportunities for us to be a part of. And so I just wanted to bring this up and, uh, maybe move forward with, uh, reaching out to see. According to this list, um, according to our previous council meeting, um, council member Montero had, um, mentioned, uh, a city, a country that we were, uh, was it Belize? Oh, Dana, Dana Hunter had mentioned that. Montero, what did you say? Cape?
Cape Verde.
Cape Verde.
Yeah, Cape Verde Islands, uh, yeah, because, uh...
Yeah, uh, yes.
I could hear him though.
Because remember, I was, I was born in the west coast of Africa and the islands called Cape Verde is, is C-A-P-E, then Verde, V-E-R-D-E islands. There are ten islands, okay? And each of the islands have their own city. So my city that I was born called Mindelo in the island of San Vincent, it's San Vicente because it's Portuguese. And, uh, and the reason that we talk about sisters is because the Cape Verde Olympic Association has contacted me to help them out. So, so I know, uh, they, they have mentioned that they would love to see, because usually they come two weeks prior to the Olympics and if we are a host city, we can help them with training facilities, with transportation, uh, maybe get them discount on hotels across the street, uh, those other stuff, like this, they need swimming facility, they need track and field facilities, so all those kind of stuff.
So I'm asking council, um, if we could give directive to our city manager to pursue potentially being a host city for the World Cup and also the, uh, Olympics. And I know you mentioned, um, and I can't remember who it was that you mentioned.
Nigeria.
Nigeria, yeah. So I don't, I, I don't have anybody in particular, but maybe if, you know, myself, the mayor and, and councilwoman Reyes could maybe potentially give you some names and maybe we could pursue it.
But, uh...
To the chair.
Then I'll go down, so go ahead.
Um, so historically, here in the City of Hawthorne, we've had sister cities. I don't know if Mayor Vargas has remembered, but we actually, um, hosted, um, I don't know if it was the City of Mexico or Mexico with Mayor Guidi. was the city of Mexico or Mexico with Mayor Guidi. And we had a huge.
I don't have any of that.
I'm sure you do. We had a huge event that brought out the mayor of Mexico here in council chambers and they actually, we presented them a key to the city. This was long ago, probably 2009, long ago. But we've had sister cities and a matter of fact, they used to line the wall on the filing cabinets in the administrative offices that showed a plaque of our sister cities. I don't know where it went, but it's been a long time coming. And then we've also hosted the Special Olympics, if you remember that. We special the, the Special Olympics and we hosted them at hotels here and we had transportation and we had council members be a escort or mentor to a group of kids and that was really good. So open to a sister city, perhaps recommendations, suggestions from the audience to a, to a sister city, you know, have the community involved since it is a community event, a community effort. I don't know if we could maybe take a couple of cities, but at the end of the day, they would want us to support them in one, one way or another. So that's just.
Could we reach back out to those cities that we hosted before?
Oh, that would be something in the city clerk's office that we'd have to pull minutes and resolutions in support of sister cities from abroad that we've brought in here.
All right, so I just wanted to follow. So you may be right, you're probably right. This happened probably before I was sitting up here as a council member. You were a city clerk for, for a while, right? So you kind of probably observed that. But a formalized sister city, like a sister city as we traditionally know where there's a back, we go visit them, they come and visit us and there's cultural exchange, economic exchange. To that degree, that's what I think we should, type of relationship we should have. Because the thing is, we can make our, we can make our, we could invite, like say Cape Verde for the, you know, the island, for them to stay here. We can open up our city facilities so they can practice, their basketball team can use our, our facilities, our schools. We make our track, we could just coordinate all that stuff so that they have somewhere to practice. That's a, that's a temporary thing, but a longer lasting type of interchange between cities, it's, it might not take that much to formalize, but it just, we need to set it, like you said, choose the right, you know, choose the right cities. Ideally, to have a sister city across the country is not, you know, you know, that's not the exciting part. It's like when you have them from abroad. And I think you collected some, did you collect feedback or was that?
Yes, on two different occasions.
And then, so I gave my, my parents hometown, our hometown in Mexico as a suggestion. He gave Cape Verde probably most likely, right? And I think some of you or I think you might have, this was actually way back then.
Eric, Eric Lampert, she, she gave us a sheet.
And then this, so this was a while back.
Yeah.
So we, we made those suggestions, but we never.
You weren't here.
We never went and.
Yeah, because.
Councilwoman Angie, did you give a name or anything or did you put anything down? You don't remember?
I know as the mayor of a city in Mexico, he came with his delegation.
But on the sheet, this feedback sheet.
Mr. Mayor, I can send the survey out again tomorrow and maybe at the next council meeting, present the results and add the results that we had from the last two times council was surveyed. But I think there's two things on the table and councilwoman Manning, please help me out. Are we looking for LA 28 sister cities or sister cities in general?
That's the question.
Yes, it's LA 28. Yeah, I was, I was specifically trying to address the immediate request of the Olympics because surrounding cities are doing the same thing and I really would love for the city of Hawthorne to have that same opportunity to host. And, you know, it also give us an international platform and it also helps us help for people to see what the city of Hawthorne is doing on a national level and it makes them fall in love with us and want to move here.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I agree with councilwoman Manning because our first step is LA 28. That's a really easy one to get to and that may extend beyond to a longer relationship because we have so much to offer. I mean, our, our school district has the funds to build an Olympic sized swimming pool. And so we could be looking at countries with a swim team that can come and swim in our Olympic sized swimming pool that we're going to have. So, I mean, we have a lot of things available to us that we can offer to a sister city and those are, LA 28 is the attraction right now, but that may turn into a long-term relationship.
So, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, I was waiting until I got all the logistic done with my country of Verde because I already have met them twice and actually potentially there is another meeting coming on June 1st where the delegation is coming. Is to have all the logistics, I was coming to this council to ask your guys' help to adopt, you know, Cape Verde Olympic Committee because basically, you know, they would love for us to help because since they're going to be, the village is going to be at UCLA, but two weeks prior, they have to be in a hotel. Like I said, they're going to need transportation, they're going to need help with the track and field, swimming, boxing. They already have mentioned several sport that they involve with. And, and we can actually be a, a host city, not just one city, but we can be several of ones.
Yes.
Because I remember when, when councilwoman English mentioned the Special Olympic, when I was president of the Lions Club, we host a Slovenia Special Olympic Team breakfast at the memorial center.
I remember.
So, 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 so we have a history there. So, but we could easily adopt several cities to say, we are here, Hawthorne is, is willing to help you, maybe got discount at the Marriott Hotel or got discount in summer hotels. And I, and I have, I talked to the superintendent for the Sentinel Valley about the track and field, at the losing or Hawthorne High. I know we have our swimming. So the boxing, you know, I'm going to be talking with the guy that came here one time about they have a boxing area, a memorial center for gymnastics. So all those kinds of things are in progress, but I wanted to was specific details, what they need for me to come to you and say, what can we do for this country that they're coming from the third world country? So what can we help them?
Yeah.
Sure. So mayor pro tem, mayor pro tem, this is, mayor pro tem, you're not looking at me like you don't want to hear anything I want to say. No, your points are well taken. I was at a meeting with supervisor Holly Mitchell and we met with other South Bay mayors. So exactly what you're talking about, but what I heard, that's just, goes to your point. I got Culver City that's trying to get like a big country, you know, like I don't know the Czech Republic or New Zealand, New Zealand, they're trying to get these big countries and, you know, there are other cities over here, Carson's trying to get ex-big country from Europe and all these other, but the thing is, what about those small countries that we could get some cash? It makes things exciting, like, you know, those are standard, you always see New Zealanders walking by here, Australians and Italians and everything. What about some of those smaller countries that nobody wants them, like nobody's like.
African countries.
Yeah, or African countries, some of the small Central American countries that have a small delegations. You know, we could offer ourselves as, you know, we could just reach out and just put ourselves on the list for those.
And I can bring you Portugal too.
Well, if you can do that, that's fine too.
Because, oh, I'm going to have to visit, I'll bring them.
You go there often, don't you?
Yes, that was my second country.
So what's, what's your request?
My request is that we move forward on contacting these cities and maybe form a committee to do some of the lead work. I don't know exactly what it takes to make this happen, but I'm, I'm sure our smart, wonderful city manager has the answers to, to make this happen, but I just wanted to move forward. But I was also thinking about maybe we could have, I don't know if we can have a committee with some of us on it to like maybe take over some of the work so that it's not so much work on you city manager. Maybe the city attorney can help you too.
He's very, he's very smart too.
He's very smart too.
So let me make a recommendation. Since, since I'm being in contact with the Cape Verde Olympic Association, so let me have this, the other meeting in June 1st with them and then maybe we'll have a clear idea, maybe because, because what they're going to tell me, what they need and then maybe we could figure out, okay, maybe this is a platform that we want to imitate to other countries to say, we can be able to do A, B, C, D, but we have to decide what can we do for a country when they come and contact us? We're going to say, okay, we have memorial center, we have hotels, we have facility for training. So we have to give them some specifics for them to be able to say.
What we can offer them.
Okay, we, we would love to come to Hawthorne. So we have to put some type of, almost a marketing.
Well, so as part of the, as part of the discussions we had at the, with the supervisor and what these other cities are doing is that they're using LA 28, they're contacting LA 28 and trying to solicit that way, parallel motion through LA 28, the organization, letting them know their interest to get like, say, for example, New Zealand or, but what, but we, what we could also do, and I think what, what might be easier to do is like, do you have any of these cities? Okay, he likes, that's his hometown, right? His home country. We could also put ourselves out there. Once we establish, it has to be quick, has to be quick. We have, we could say, hey, you know, are there any other countries that are looking for, you know, support? We'd be glad to host them here.
Yeah, so we could all maybe send before the next council meeting, our country, we're interested to, to our city manager.
But then they could also give us a list of those that don't have a host.
I already asked. They said that if you want to have a city host a city, you have to contact them directly because they do not, they're responsible for venues, they're not responsible for the relationships. So you have to reach out to the countries specifically. And I even asked LA 28 if they had a list of people that participated in the Olympics prior to, and they said that's not information that they provide. So we have to do our own research and reach out to those countries ourselves.
Let me have, because the, one of the, the Olympic committee from Cape Verde, one of the representative is part of the whole world Olympic committee. So, so she's been coming to, in LA with, with the Olympic Committee 2028, all around the world, all the leaders around the world that have a representative on that committee. So she actually probably can give me some names of these different representative from different country that could potentially say, we, I'm interested in a host city. Yeah. So she can give me some names, but you know.
Okay, sounds good. We have a concurrence, right?
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next one's my item. Item 21, prioritizing of city events in accordance with city resources. As I mentioned before at the last meeting, I have a big concern and I've heard it, you know, just kind of got a sense of it, that the amount of city events cumulatively has impacted our employees pretty intensely. And what I've been by that is that staff, I see staff overwhelmed. Staff hasn't been able to perform their jobs as, as defined by their job description and just being able to, to complete and perform the tasks that they've been assigned to do efficiently and quickly and due to the fact that they're planning events. As an example, I've gotten calls actually about permits in the recreation area that they haven't been processed. People are being, are getting upset. You know, in fact, I think some, some of the residents were going to come here, but I, hopefully it got resolved. They're not here today. And some of the businesses are also expressing frustration with some of their applications and their permits also not getting processed. And I guess on my end, when I've called, I mentioned this before, by the way, I call and staff isn't available even to help me out with stuff when I'm calling remotely on the phone and it's because they're out planning events. And so I think the priority needs to continue, staff needs to complete all the tasks that they have been assigned to do and, you know, we need to address the issue of the events that have overwhelmed staff. Staff's here on weekends, you know, we're asking staff to be here on weekends. Public and a lot of other cities and organizations, cities have their events during the week purposely so that they could avoid having staff be here on the weekends and, but just, they're overworked and I could see it. Public works, community services, I mean, they're here on the weekends, every weekend or every other weekend, there's times where every weekend in a row, they're, they're here and we're keeping away, keeping them away from their families. And of big concern is this, that we've had three of our employees quit. Three of our employees have quit in the community services area. So that's, that's what we're kind of dealing with. So is there burnout? Yes, there is, which is why I wanted to address this immediately and have a resolution to this. And this is what I am recommending. Actually, my council colleagues have an event, a list of events here that staff has been responsible for. Okay? It's been about 47 events last year and about 21 so far and it's just May, so we just, everybody has access to that right here. So my recommendation is that we budget for all the events in the city that we're going to be having and have one single line item for all these events and that all these city events are now city staff organized, that council members are no longer going to be organizing these events. These are city staff organized. And what that means, this means that there's not hosted by, they're not sponsored by any council members, there's no flyers with pictures of any council members. This is a true, these are true city events which are sponsored and organized by city staff for the sake of the residents and that just doesn't have any, any association to council members. We need to move away from that. But the thing is though, if any council member has any events that they think are, would be great for the city, please bring it before the council. And at that point, I believe that if it's a great event and it's going to benefit the majority of Hawthorne's residents, that the, that there will be a good, easy, that'll kind of be an easy win to get it approved, okay? But, so you have your list of events here that we've had, like I said, 47 last year and about 21. The, the impact on the employees is real, it's not imagined and we just need to find some resolution. So with the single line item, budgeted yearly, I have a list of suggested city events and this list is consolidated, I guess that's a good proper word, consolidated and let's see, except that it's missing one element here. Can pass it on? It's fair, these events, events that, they, we've consolidated things here, we've consolidated here, things here to be able to just not have such a big impact. Events that are duplicate, redundant are included here. One thing that we don't see here is the meeting greets, which I think we could change the frequency on, so I'll leave that up for discussion, okay?
Can you read?
All right, so yeah.
Can you read them?
Yeah, all right. So start, I mean, we're, looked at this thing, starting with this coming month, July and August. We have the summer concerts and movies in the parks, which, which we had three of them last time and on Friday nights. The state of the city, which is in August. The State of the City, which is in August. This, in September, the Toucha Truck and Jumper Fest combined. Then we also have the Fiesta in the Park Latino, for Latino Heritage Month. In October, the Car Show at City Hall, which we saw recently. The Halloween event as well in that month. November, we have the Turkey Giveaway in partnership with Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce at this point. And in December, the Winter Wonderland Event. Also the Toy Giveaway in partnership with the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. And so the Toy Giveaway and the Turkey Giveaway, I think those are events that we could partner with the Chamber. We just gotta maybe hear from her and see what, what plans she has for the organization over there. Okay, positive changes, I hope. February, Black History Month. We could do that at the city council meetings and have a nice little type of recognition, I think. And in March, there's been an annual community cleanup. In April, the Earth Day Service Providers Fair, and I think something, the Bunny Breakfast. Something we've had done. So just note that what we've done here is consolidate events. And then the Hawthorne Business Expo, we can do that in partnership with the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I've already mentioned, we, we need to hear from her, right? The Autism Walk in partnership with Centinela Valley Union High School. They've actually approached us and have expressed interest on doing this, so that could, it's a partnership. It's not, we're not the primes on those. So when we say it's a partnership, we're not the primes anymore, we're supporting. And in May, we could combine the Mother's Day and Women's History Event together because they're kind of so close by.
Well, March and May are two months apart.
Okay, so, yeah. So let me finish here, please. And in June, we have the Juneteenth Celebration, which is a, an important holiday that we just need to make sure that we keep honoring all those people that went through all these different things and didn't get to hear about, you know, the fact that they were free. So that's an important one. The Meeting Greets, we have down there. So I, we could talk about that, I have suggested frequency on that. But we just need to be, discuss that. So, so that's my recommendation, and I wanted to move with that.
To the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I know that you want to separate Mother's Day and Women's History Month, but I believe that they should be separate because Women's History Month is in the month of March and May is in the month of, Mother's Day is in the month of May. So I believe that they should be separated. Women's Day is about honoring and celebrating contributions that women have made to society. And I feel like it's important that we honor our women, period. And even though they're close, they have two different meanings. And so I don't believe that you should combine them. And then Mother's Day, I really believe it's important that we honor our mothers because we wouldn't be here today without our mothers. Mothers deserve their special day, they really do. We do a lot, we take on a lot. And so to not, to not express how much we support our mothers would be a disservice to our mothers in this community. So in my opinion, honoring our mothers, you can't look at it as if it's just an event. The meaning behind honoring our mothers means a lot. You tell me one person in here that don't think that their mom is an important part of their life, that they don't. And you're talking about three hundred and sixty five days. You only get one day that you're supposed to honor your mom for all the sacrifices that she does? All the work that we do? And you wanna take away honoring them, the contributions? We always sacrifice. We always are putting our lives on the line to make sure that our families stay together. We take care of the household. We should be honored. The contributions that we have made to this world, we should be honored. And it's not just an event, it's a celebration. So me, I am not okay with taking away honoring our moms and honoring the contribution that women make to our, to our, to our society. And during that time, the mothers are awarded, the women come and they hear healing conversations from women that are going through something. And they're sharing their stories to keep us going when we don't feel like going. To lift us up when we're feeling down. To help us feel great about ourselves when we don't. You need that. You need that support. And for me, I wanna continue to be able to support the women in our community. So I don't agree with taking away Mother's Day in May and Women's History Month, putting Women's History Month in the month of May. We deserve two days out of the year.
Now, thank you for your feedback, but Mother's Day is included on this list.
No, I'm saying Women's History Month should have its own month and Mother's Day should have its own month.
Through the chair.
Well, I think she has the floor.
To the chair. I, I think we have to sort of establish some ground rules. I, I think we're missing that upfront. What is our objective of doing what we're doing here? And it's to get the most benefit for the city, not a particular group, not a particular, I mean, because if, if we start saying, okay, we have to do it for this person, then the next person, well, what about us? What about our fathers? What about, you know, I, I appreciate the mother, I'm a mother of five, a grandmother of five. I, I love being a mom. But I also, as city council, is that our job? Is it the city's job to recognize every single thing, every single identity point that comes across, you know, our calendar? So when you're looking at the amount of work that we, that the city is doing and what our jobs are as the city council, I don't know that that's our job. I mean, obviously, I'm gonna defend the meet and greets, not just because it's mine, but because of what it does for the businesses. The businesses bring us money. And that, that, we need that money. Homeowners bring us money.
Moms do too.
One person has the floor at the time.
Yeah, moms do too, but the thing is, is that we don't need two events for women. I don't, I, we don't even have one event for men. I don't see it, we can't even say the car show is for men because I like cars. So I, personally, I, I would speak because I know some people don't feel like they can speak about this issue. I, I don't, in all honesty, I wouldn't even vote for a Mother's Day event. I don't think the city should be involved in that, that's my personal opinion.
You shouldn't have came.
I did come.
You shouldn't have though.
One person has the floor, both of you guys?
Why would I not support you in your event?
No, wait, just a moment, one person has the floor, there's no interruptions. I don't need to go through the decorum rules again. Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Go ahead, ma'am.
You wanna go? You want me to go?
Counselwoman, raise English, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Let me first of all, thank you and staff, obviously, for coming up with the list and making it a little bit more streamlined and more teamwork-like, if you will, because there's a lot of hands that are involved with regards to events in our city. And I have to commend the city, we've had a lot of events and events that have been great events and people look forward to those events. I'm excited to see that the Chamber is working collectively in partnership again with the city and able to partner with us in these endeavors, especially Operation Gobble and the Chamber, which I think is, is a great combo. I'd like to ultimately make sure that we have the venues put aside so that we could make those efforts, so that we could bring all of it together collectively with regards to also the Toy Giveaway. How better than to provide happiness and, 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 you know, glee to all those that come to see Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus and to get a toy and to walk away happily ever after. I think that's very promising and look forward to that. And again, with regards to Business Expo in partnership with the Chamber, because ultimately, at the end of the day, there's connections there that are history in the making with regards to the time that the Chamber's been here in the city and has made that establishment known. I look forward to just, you know, at the end of the day, putting aside, you know, it's not really about me, it's not really about any of us and or who event it is, right? Because that's what I'm understanding. The whole premises of just coming together to just collectively make a one-time, go at it, if you will, in this new fiscal year of twenty five, twenty six, right? For the new fiscal year to bring in these new events. What else do I see? I, I must agree, however, with regards to March being Women's History Month because that is historic and that has been something that we've done. And we've also done the Women's Day Event, which I think are staple events and women look for those events. And so, you know, I'd like to partner again with the Hawthorne Chamber to help, to help in those endeavors too with regards to Women's History Month and Women's Mother's Day Event. Juneteenth Celebration, this is something that we've taken up in the last few years. Thanks to Councilmember Montero and Dana, our city clerk has been helping in that. It'll be great to see a Father's Day component added to that, right? Whether, you know, it's something small. It, it's, it would be good to include our fathers in the month of June because at the end of the day, they're contributors too in many ways. Other than that, I, I don't really see no real debate, if you will. But I, but I do wanna make sure that, I echo Councilmember Manning's words with regards to March and May to assure that they are recognized as such, Women's History Month and Mother's Day. And other than that, thank you again to all of our employees, all of our Public Works folks. I, this is the first that I'm hearing that there's been three employees that quit. I don't know what's the reason behind that. I don't wanna think that it's because of the events that we have here in Hawthorne. However, we're not allowed to speak on personnel matters, so I don't even know why that was brought up. But on another hand, Movies in the Park, we all seen how big that is in the parks and how popular that's become. And just seeing the families and, and everyone at the park has grown in, in years. And so I'm elated to see that that's coming back July and August, and I believe it's every Friday in the park. I look forward to that. And just the many contributions that we've made in the cultures and just everything, I think it's good, I think it's good. At the end of the day, I think there's progress, I, you know, I don't wanna speak to, you know, how it's been hindering certain departments or certain folks, because at the end of the day, they've been great events. And, and, and I don't wanna take that for granted or take that lightly. I understand that there needs to be some restraints with regards to many, many events that we want to just, you know, be able to, be able to celebrate and bring to the city, so I'm gonna be careful about that. However, I'm gonna go with the recommendations that are here, but I do want to make that amendment with regards to March and May. And I want to include the Hawthorne Chambers in more support with regards to the other events that I spoke on, I spoke on. So thank you.
Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you staff and Vaughn to bring us to our attention. Because remember, it's not just the event, but we see special, you know, I go to all the events. It's almost fifty two weeks, fifty two Saturdays, that our staff comes and work and work and work. And that's also, it's overtime. When we think about it, it's money, it's overtime, it's a lot of overtime. So to me, I've been screaming and yelling a long time ago to consolidate these events together. So that is where I got rid of the multicultural festival because when we decided that we were going to do concerts and movies in the park, I said, why, why do multicultural festivals if we're gonna have music every Saturday in the summer? So that is where I said, okay, I will help the city do the Juneteenth Celebration. Now let's talk about Mother's Day and the Women's Month. Once upon a time, before Ms. Manning was elected, we used to do recognition of Women's Months right here. Councilmembers used to nominate the women that if there was some women that they know in the community that have done a good, good civic work or, or poet or writer, we brought them here and give them a proclamation to show. And they, they had ten minutes to present something and to say, okay, this woman has been a poet, a writer, and it has lived in Hawthorne, and we acknowledge you and we honor you. And that was it. There was no big event on Saturday with speakers and staff time and overtime. So we were, we recognized them right here. And that's what we did with the Black History Month. We recognized people right here at City Hall in like in half an hour, one hour. And we did have that done with the Black History Month too, right? Because even, I remember when Ms. Valentine was here, she brought some people and recognized them. I brought some coach and celebrated them because they were outstanding citizens during the Martin Luther King Week. So just think about it. I believe we could do Mother's Day because mother are angels. So I do believe we should do a Mother's Day event in May, but in March, just, just recognize the women. We don't need to have a, a big event, they can come here and be honored. That's my opinion. But all these other events, I agree, especially for the Turkey Giveaway, Operation Gobble, because we, sometimes it's three different events in the city and I see the same people coming three times to the same different event to get turkeys. So if we could combine all those Turkey Day, like the city and the Chamber of Commerce and, and whatever, and come up one big event at Memorial Center or even right here in front of City Hall, give the turkeys away. The same thing as the toys in December. Just do one big toys giveaway in one day in collaboration with the Chamber. The same time for the Autism Walk. The Autism Walk, we just started freshly, but I already spoke with the Centinela Valley Superintendent and their, their football field, all the fields, the Grand Open is gonna be in October. And I'm intended next year, April, that's when we're gonna do the walk. Because they wanna do a five K, and I told them, we're not gonna do it on the street. We wanna do it at your field, like we used to do for the Relay for Life. So I'm gonna bring that five K Autism Walk right into Hawthorne's High School at the, at the field. So this is the kind of things we have to start to create more partnership. If we're looking for partnership to another country for the Olympic twenty eight, we should look for partnership right here in our city to make us do great things, good event, but partner with some other providers. Like we said, the Business Expo, the Chamber had a lot of experience doing that for many, many, many years. So we don't have to reinvent all this wheel. We don't have to create big things that cost a lot of money, a lot of overtime, a lot of stress. And yes, three staff member. And yes, three staff members quit from the community service, and we don't know the reason. But to me, you know, I see these guys working 24/7, and we need to give them a break sometime. So 47 event, imagine, that's 47 weeks in 2024. And we already have 21, it's 21 weekends. So we have to consolidate. And I said, "There's be compassion, because it's the betterment of our city, it's the betterment of our staff life, and we want to make sure that the citizens will continue to enjoy it, because what we have in this list, those are the things that are important, and we just have to make sure that it makes sense to all of us." And there will be a city-sponsored event that nobody will claim, "Oh, it's my event, your event." No, it is city-sponsored event.
Councilmember Montero, sir, you're making the recommendation for, if you are, support it, Women's History Month as a city council recognition in March at the city council meeting. Okay.
To the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just want to be clear that the Business Expo was something that I inherited. Nobody wanted to take that on. I don't know what happened before I came, but the Chamber was doing the Business Expo. I wasn't. I took it on because nobody else wanted to. So I look forward to working with you, Pat Donaldson, for the Business Chamber. But again, it wasn't something that I came up with, it was something that was happening before I came. And I took on the responsibility and I worked my ass off. I worked my ass off for that Business Expo, and I got volunteers and I got sponsorship. No one helped me. So I just want people to know that I took that position on because I wanted the city council to have a Business Expo. So I'm really excited that it's now going to be back in the hands of the Chamber. And, 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 Pat, some of what my colleagues are talking about in terms of overtime and employee burnout, a lot of what they were doing will now be in your hands. So you'll be doing some of this work. I look forward to that, and I can't wait to see you do this work. And yeah, so I, it's not about me, it's about me appreciating the folks that are in our city, in our community. So I worked my butt off, believe you me, I am a hands-on, results-driven person, and so it's not about me. It's about making sure that the mothers, women in our community feel valued, feel appreciated. And so obviously, you're going to be passionate about, if I'm, you're going to be passionate about the things that you care about. And I care about women, and I care about mothers, and I care about fathers. I did have an event for Father's Day, but I was strongly discouraged to put that event on. So I combined my event with my colleague, June 10th, my Father's Day Bike Ride. So I wasn't being picky, picking this person, picking this person. I was making sure that I was showing value to males and to females, recognizing them. And when we talk about tax dollars, look at statistics to see who at the grocery store, who spends the money. The women are the ones that's out there spending those money. So even though businesses come here, they are not our only source of revenue. Women are our source of revenue too. So let's be clear about that. So, thank you.
Oh, I'm good. To the chair.
To the chair, just a quick notice, Mrs. Manning have a point, because one time during the Juneteenth, we did the father back, right? But, you know, but this time, actually, Juneteenth, we add the component there that's going to be a car show for men and women to come all together on Juneteenth.
Okay, Ms., go ahead.
Thank you.
Just close it out.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge again, this isn't nothing new with regards to the Hawthorne Chamber. I mean, we're not here to see anyone fail. And by all means, Pat Donaldson, we are here in partnership, and so I want to offer that, okay? In spite of ourselves, in spite of, you know, sometimes the not-so-popular words, if you will, but I want to acknowledge the fact that it's the Hawthorne Business Expo in partnership with Hawthorne Chambers. You're not alone, okay? You're not alone. So I want to make sure, you know, that I express that. And I must also acknowledge Business Connect, because Business Connect has been helpful with regards to streamlining businesses that are ultimately coming to Hawthorne and looking for permit processes and things like this. And so it's a win-win for all of us. Business Connect, the Hawthorne Chamber, the Business Resource, Business Fair, and I could go on and on and on. And with many folks that come out to council quite often, that, you know, take it upon themselves to come sit in an evening here to listen to debate and listen to all kinds of different, you know, policy-driven efforts, events, et cetera, you know, thank you, thank you. And we look for you too, to volunteer and to assist us, like you have during our toy giveaway with Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus and the, you know, the faith-based organizations that have their monthly meetings with regards to, you know, not only praying for us, but have their events too. And so I just know that together, I think this is going to be a great effort moving forward. And whatever I could do to offer my help, I'm going to do that. So, you know, rest assured, I think we're all in this together, because we're not here to fail. We're not. That's not what we're trying to do. We want to be a good neighbor. We want to be able to partner in collaboration to assure that we have success, and that's what I'm going to walk away with. I'm not burdened by this, I'm not mad about this, upset about this, I'm cool and collective. Yeah. So, thank you, Mayor. I know this was one of your efforts, but I think at the end of the day, it's going to be something that is going to help us all. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to close this out. So the changes, I'm going to pass on that my notes are, the only changes to this printed document is that we are separating the Women's History Month and having recognition at City Council for Women's History Month. On April, the Bunny Breakfast is being added to, well, it always has been held, like for the last three, four, five years, with the Earth Day and the Service Provider Fair. My notes will reflect that. There's Earth Day Service Provider Fair, Bunny Breakfast.
Yeah, so, so.
Bunny Breakfast, yes.
Oh, there's a Bunny Breakfast. But at the Earth, there's an Earth Day, there's an Earth Day, a Service Provider Fair, and an Easter Hunt, right?
But that's the Bunny Breakfast.
No, it's not a Bunny Breakfast, it's called Easter Hunt.
Spring Event.
Should I call it Spring Event?
Spring Event.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
No, actually, that's good, that's good. And then, okay, so, Women's History Month, City Council Recognition in March, that's been noted. Spring Event has been added to the Earth Day Service Provider Fair and Spring Event. Mother's Day is exclusive in May. And we need to establish the frequency of the meet and greets, because we do admit the success, but it might be a bit, one of those things that we also want to be less frequent, most, just what we could bear. I'm going to put something out there, if there's any pushback on it or any other ideas. I suggest that we do this quarterly. And remember, all these events are to be organized by city staff independent of the city council, so no longer city council member events. So it's not hosted by, it's not sponsored by council members, so is that something the city manager's office could bear? Unless, I mean...
Yes, I work under your direction, so if I'm directed to move forward with that, yes, we'll do that.
I know you brought this, the meet and greet stuff before the council, so I'll give you the floor.
I've already got the calendar booked out for the next few months anyway. And as far as staff goes, Eric is not in here, but Eric uses what, the videos and the film footage that he gets during the meet and greets to publish on our social media platforms. One of the challenges that he's expressed to me about is not having enough social media content to keep it up to date and keep people interested and get in the algorithm of these platforms to be able to recognize us and our numbers and push us out there. So having that kind of fodder for our social media platforms is good. I'm not sure how, I can't speak to how much time it takes, but that's the only thing that is used during the meet and greets, is the social media department, and they just brought on a new staff member. And so according to Eric, they can handle it. But again, that's not going to be my call anymore, because it's not an event that I do, so.
Let me, can I ask?
But it does help businesses, and if you only do it once a quarter, think about how many businesses we have out there.
How many, could I ask, how many of these do you have scheduled out or proposed?
I'd have to look at the calendar, but I think at least the next three are already scheduled.
Okay. Do you have volunteers from the community that could substitute for like the volunteer aspect of setting up tables and calling and setting things up?
I do all the calling, the city does nothing.
But could we relieve staff if they're, okay.
I didn't, can you clarify what staff is needed for the meet and greets? Because maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, let's just double-check and let's just resolve that. Let's just resolve that.
I think that question, let me just ask this, if we're moving away from council-driven events, I don't see this being fair. Councilwoman Faye Johnson can call businesses and subscribe them to come, which I don't have an issue with, but other council members can't schedule or events like that. So I think that's the question. The work is work, we'll do the work. But for clarity, are these going to be council-driven meet and greets? Or city staff putting the meet and greets together? That's where I would need clarity on.
I, this needs to be city staff, we need to be fair across the board. I might come up with an idea, the city council approves it, and now, go ahead, what do you have an idea?
To the chair. So since we're talking about 25-26, so if Councilwoman Johnson already has scheduled stuff, maybe she can do still meet and greet until June 30th, and then starting July 1st, we go on a quarterly basis.
Can I make a suggestion? Since we do work hand-in-hand with the city, I, you know how I opened up the calendar and the list to Catherine, so she has access, she knows who's coming and things like that. We can add the council to that, let them have access to the calendar, so when they come across a business that they want to put on the meet and greet, you guys aren't caring the brunt of that, because I really would like to continue to bring in businesses for the meet and greets. But I understand where you're coming from, that makes sense, but if it's open to everyone and you're out eating dinner or breakfast or whatever, and you talk to the owner and they want to be on the meet and greet, you just hop on your phone, go on the calendar, see what's available, and you pop them in. I think that's helpful to the city also. And it's not just my event, I don't mind taking a backseat and saying whatever, I still want to bring businesses in.
There's been a, there's been a list of probably businesses that you've already thought of, brought before the city council, that's something they could probably just take over fully.
To the chair.
No response, okay, go ahead.
I thought we just established just now that we're going to be working with the Chamber, and the Chamber is the person who's responsible for those relationships with the businesses. So I think she should be the person who's responsible for connecting with the businesses and not a council person, because it still seems like it's her event.
We need to, if designated, the city, the Hawthorne Chamber could step into that role, but as of now, I think it's appropriate, if we're going through this whole exercise, and of course, it's causing, it's causing, you know, a little bit of uncomfort. I think July 1st, I could just fully go over, and then that's it, the quarterly.
And then at that point, it's out of my hands. You're asking me about frequency, it has nothing to do with me.
Well, we just need to establish some frequency, and this kind of just...
I'll finish it out through June, that's, I, I'll have to check and make sure I don't have somebody for July, but definitely I'll finish out through June.
But if you already have those and they already have it, it's just really, you could just hand it over, and that's, unless you can do that as of today.
And then you, Vaughn can decide.
We just want to be, you know...
Because in June, in July, we only have one meeting, right? So even if we think that starting July 1st, we'll start doing quarterly, so then we go from there, and then maybe Vaughn can organize with the Chamber of Commerce through Pat to get all those business access. And then maybe, actually, if the Chamber, you could put a schedule together for quarterly to say, "Okay, business A, B, C, D will be there in this month, in the month of, say, October, July, I'm thinking, right, September?" Then like this, go like that, so we'll know who's coming.
To the chair. And Vaughn. In working with Pat to, you know, bring this together, can I just make one request? And I'm just going to piggyback off of Councilmember Johnson. Can you at least make sure if there's a couple of vendors coming, say, on a particular council meeting, that at least one of them have food? Yeah, like say for instance, one is about, you know, programs and services, and then one is about, you know, registering for something, and then there's one that provides seviche, like they did today with chips. Right? Yeah, something like that, but it'll be good, you know, at the end of the day, it'll be good, it'll be all right.
I just have a question with this. With the list of events that we have now, staff-driven along with Chambers, are we eliminating the list of events that we have for stipend purpose, for city-sponsored events?
I think that's, we, right now, we won't...
I don't think so, I don't think so.
Don't do it now, we'll think about what's appropriate.
Because a lot of, some of these, a lot of these events are in there.
Robert, why are you bringing up, Robert? Why are you bringing up another can of worms, man?
No, sir, look.
Okay, okay, never mind.
There's some logic in that, but today, this is enough, this is enough today. All right. The next two, right, are going to, okay, so I'm going to just summarize, I have the list here, I already mentioned it. Women's History Month is going to be a standalone event in March with city council recognition. The spring event has been added to the Earth Day Service Provider Fair in April. Mother's Day is a standalone, I mean, I'm just making, showing you the corrections. And the meet and greets are going to be quarterly after the next two. And the next two are already, you're already, everything's in motion anyways. Mr. City Manager, you guys could go ahead and put those on and then just move quarterly. And do I have a motion?
I can.
I make the motion second.
And to the chair after the vote.
The votes are in.
So I just wanted to give a directive to the city manager that maybe to have a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce President, Ms. Pat Donaldson, to come with the list of, you know, expectation and what we're going to do, what she's going to do, right? And, oh my God, I lost my thought. Yeah, just, you know, because we want this to collaborate, this partnership to work well, right? So to come up, you know, with all these events that's going to... So to come up, you know, with all these events that's going to be taking place, like Ms. Councilwoman English mentioned about the venues, the dates, right? Who guys could organize all of that in advance, so to make sure that we are truly in a partnership, and it'll be, you know, clarity, transparency, all those beautiful words of collaboration together. So just have a meeting with, with Pat and figure it out, what the city could do and what the chamber can do, and make sure we all are on the same pace. Right?
I would recommend, if possible, Mr. Mayor, if I can send out a survey to council, independently, asking what you would like to see from the Hawthorne Chamber. And with that information, I can meet with Pat Donaldson to discuss her future moving forward with the city.
At some point, I think that's good, so you could begin the discussions with her. But at some point, I think there should be a public presentation of public questions too, that I, I get to ask, and then the public can see that discussion take place. Because frankly, the community would like to see, you know, an improved relationship, a different relationship, something that's going to move our businesses forward. Not, you know, just a movement from what we, what has happened before, in a direction of progress, right?
Sorry about that, I was being advised by the city attorney that the comment I made regarding sending the survey out, I would be breaking the brown neck, so we would have to come up with another way to...
Then we just do it in public.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I'm pretty sure people up here aren't going to say, hey, now just do whatever you want. You know, this is going to be, I think some of us might have a more, you know, stronger, you know, requests and expectations, and like I said, you know, the telehealth, it can't just be telehealth that we're just, you know, just taking through a whole, you know, questioning and analyzing what they do. We got to be able to see what's happening over here. We need to be fair across the board, right?
So when would you like that presentation to be presented?
I'll agendize it, let's just...
Take a meeting in June.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll agendize it.
I'll give you a month.
But if, if you need longer, just let us know. But there's some things here that we might begin to work on together, right? Well, actually, the first potential partnership activity would be in November, so you still have time, so she can think about different things, all right? All right, thank you, guys. Next, we have elected officials' reports recommendations. We'll begin with our city treasurer.
Good evening, everyone. Let's see. I've been not at a few meetings, I've attended a few conferences. One was the GIA, and the other one was the CMTA. The focus was basically economic outlook and economic uncertainty in the markets right now. Very knowledgeable, a lot of things to learn, I was glad I went. Next, let's see. The Dodger Dream Field was such a beautiful thing to see. My son grew up in Hawthorne Little League, I spent many years as a team mom and member of the Little League Board, so it was really a beautiful thing to see. And parents really appreciate that kind of thing, and it really means a lot. And that's coming from someone who, like I said, my son grew up in Little League. I do miss those days a lot. I wanted to say congratulations to our police department awardees at the Medal of Valor Luncheon. It was really nice to attend that and, and see the many awards given out. That was my first time attending that, so I appreciated, and hats off, and kudos to our police department and all the good things that they do. I was so surprised by the many stories and the heroic stories and the things that they go through on a daily that we don't really see, but to hear it and see that them get recognized for it amongst their peers was, was really nice. So thank you, I thank you guys for that, and I appreciated attending. Let's see, we have one CD mature earlier this month, another one is rolling over Friday. It's still great to capture, you know, over these 4% interest rates. There's now an 80% chance that the Fed is probably going to cut rates in October. So I know you guys have been hearing me say this many, many months, you know? They're gearing up for June, but they're hoping that things kind of hold till October. So, you know, rate cuts in this instance are made to stimulate the economy. Cutting rates is meant to encourage spending and investments, it also helps to lower borrowing costs. However, like I keep saying, rates are at a 20, like a 20-year high, so it's a great time to invest long-term in locking those rates. Like I keep saying, the target rate cuts are on track for June, but, you know, they're hoping everything holds till October. So I say it again, I urge you all to call your banks, negotiate your savings account rates, you can do that. The bank works for you. You don't work for them, that's your money, so I always encourage that. I have a request to council. I would like to request a proclamation for a fellow educator over at Semirhan Elementary. She's retiring after almost 30 years of teaching a gifted third grade, so I am very proud to call her a coworker, and she taught both my kids in the, in the gifted class of third grade. So there are many, many, many people, you know, who love and appreciate Ms. Anya Combs. So I'm requesting that council please join Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office and Assemblywoman Tina McKinner in issuing a proclamation for her. And that concludes what I need to say. Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything from the city clerk's office? Ms. Joy?
Just want to thank everyone for coming out, and a reminder that notary services are available by appointment, just give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Faye Johnson?
Hello, everyone. Shout-outs to our two vendors that came this evening for our meet and greet. We had the Humble Heart Academy, which is located at 1332 Hawthorne Boulevard, and they are preschool and daycare serving Hawthorne families with children from six months to five years. Also, the Awesome Ceviche from Tacos Mariscos 106. They are located at 4549 West Imperial, and they specialize in Mexican seafood. So we appreciate their participation in sharing with us what they, what they have, and, and it seems to be something that the businesses really enjoy. As a matter of fact, one, two of the vendors so far have practically been in tears since we started this program, because they, they really do believe that the city cares about them. And so it's helping our relationships with the businesses, it shows that we care and we do support our businesses, and hopefully it'll bring in some more higher-end businesses too by doing things like this. So Pat, if this is something that you're going to take over, if you need anything, just let me know. I, I didn't get that we actually asked you to do any of this, it sounds like we're just putting it on you, so we'll see how that turns out. I'd like to give a shout-out to one of our city employees, and if I slaughter the last name, I apologize, but it's Marilyn Atiki over in Community Services. She, she got a couple of shout-outs from the community, signing up families and their childrens for, children for some of the classes that we have over the summer. She, she's doing a great job. They said she was very professional and very friendly, so I wanted to give that shout-out. Thank you to the L.A. Dodgers Foundation for the two new Dream, Dodgers Dream Field, which they rehab for us. That was awesome, it was extremely great event, I had a great time, the kids had a great time. And I would highly recommend the, the coaching platform for the high-risk profession, sharp performance that the police have. That's a really good program for anybody that would, that is an employee or an elected official. Also, yesterday we had our memorial service at the Memorial Center, and we received two certificates, one from Holly Mitchell in recognition of the dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all the residents of Los Angeles County. This one came from Holly Mitchell, Mitchell, from our memorial service yesterday, and this one came from our state senator, Laura Richardson, for the annual Memorial Day Ceremony and in recognition of your exemplary, exemplary service, dedication, and in honor of paying tribute to all of the men and women who have served our nation. Thank you for your commitment to the legacy of our American heroes. So these are two certificates to the city of Hawthorne from the event yesterday. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to Councilwoman Katrina Manning.
Hello, thank you, mayor.
Yes.
I had a busy couple of weeks. I had the opportunity, I'm going to start off by talking about Supervisor Mitchell. I had an opportunity to go to a fireside chat, and one of the things that she said was really profound and really resonated with me, is that rejection is new direction. And so a lot of times, people, they hear the word no, and they give up. But she said that when you hear the word no, it's an opportunity for you to redirect your direction. That really stuck with me. Another thing she said is, own your mistakes and then self-correct. I think so often, a lot of folks make mistakes, but they forget to admit it, take accountability, and self-correct. Also, I had an opportunity to attend the Sentinel Valley Union High School District Valley Safety Summit. I'd like to say thank you Hugo Rojas for inviting me to that event. I felt like this week, or I guess the last couple of weeks, I've been spending a lot of time with our PD. I also had an opportunity to attend the K-9 BBQ Dinner. That was fabulous. And I also participated in the 49th Annual South Bay Medal of Honor Awards. And when you talk about pride, my chest, I walked around with my chest stuck out the entire time, because we had so many of our officers that were awarded that day. And so I am proud to be a city councilwoman that have a team, a department like we do, so thank you guys so much for your sacrifice. Also, I want to shout-out to your wives for them allowing you guys to put your life on the line for everyone else every single day. Thank you so much for your hard work and your commitment to the city of Hawthorne residents, thank you. Also, I had an opportunity to attend Dodgers game as well. When I tell you it's a beautiful place, it's an amazing place, and I hope that you all take the time to go over there to see our partnership and how beautiful that was. I also, and I don't remember if this happened last council meeting or not, but I still wanted to take a moment to say that I had an opportunity to go celebrate the two years of Bridge of Hope, our program, services that we have. And that was just pure joy, to be able to sit with them and, and hear their stories and break fellowship with them. That was really beautiful. I also went to Indian Wells to our California Cities Municipal Seminar, and some of the things that we talked about was building resilient communities and uniting for disaster readiness. And I can't stress how, well, I'm sure everybody know the importance of really uniting, because you think that you're prepared, and then when a disaster happens, you're looking around like, what do I do? What do I take? Who do our, you know, look to, to protect? And so that was really, really a profound discussion about uniting and supporting each other, especially, you know, our animals and our seniors. We got to really make sure that we have our stuff together when we're looking to make sure that they're okay. And then I think we had the groundbreaking of Zella Davis Park. I think that happened, this, it's been so many events, but I had an opportunity to attend that, and I got on the, I don't know, what do you call it? The monkey bars or whatever? Anyway, I got on that with the kids, and that was really, really fun, reminded me of being a kid. But I, my park wasn't that beautiful when I was, was young, so again, that's something else that our city is doing, and we have to take advantage of those resources. So make sure you go by the Zella Davis Park, because it is beautiful. And I also wanted to say thank you to our funders who supported that effort. And I believe, let me see. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Angie Reyes-English?
Thank you, mayor. Can I just real quickly go through some of the events that we're having in our city? Summer in the Parks from June 24th to August 16th, various programs in Eucalyptus Park, Holly Park, Holly Glen, Jim Thorpe Memorial Park, and Ramona Park. Make sure to reach out to our Wreckin Parks Division so that you could learn how you could enroll your student. I know there's a lot of parents right now searching places where they could drop off their, their kids for the summer, so make sure to do that. Summer swim registration information for Friday, May 24th, excuse me, 23rd, in-person starting at 9:00 a.m., Hawthorne Memorial Center. So make sure to, you know, swim, summer swim registration, again, at Hawthorne Memorial Center, to learn more about that. You'll have to make sure to get over there and register. Hawthorne Historic Society's having their Hometown Pancake Breakfast on June 7th, Saturday from 8:00 to 11:30, that's at Jim Thorpe Park. Again, that's the museum, June 7th. Let me just acknowledge our Hawthorne Police, today's presentation, Sharp Performance, thank you for that. I was not really aware that the service has been available for nearly three years and has been helping staff, employees, so kudos to our Hawthorne Police in recognizing that there's more than just, you know, coming to work every day. It's, you know, there's a lot more than that, and it's great to know that they're sincere in assuring that there's counseling and services available for those that need it. So thank you for that. Like to also make a recognition of the Dodgers Field, that's great excitement, I think it's still going. I saw, I watched it on Channel 22, and so it looked like that was a lot of fun. Congratulations to everyone, and again, especially our families, I should say. Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce, Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce Mixer, June 19th. There's also the Hawthorne Chamber Backpack Giveaway on August 27th at Coram Bloom School, and September 29th, the Rio Hondo Golf Tournament. Kudos to our chamber on those efforts. Bridge of Hope Housing, you know, this has been a long time coming, it's just amazing to know that it's already a second year anniversary. So thank you staff and Vaughn for assuring that we continue in efforts to address our, our homeless, but more importantly, providing services to those that are in need. I want to make mention the Calvary Church that came today, offering a program, Dear West Mount, Can I Live?, which is going to be at Glory Christian Fellowship, former church of mine, on June 21st in Carson. I also want to make mention of the host city, I hope that we come together and find a, a great partner in hosting for, you know, not just the Olympics, but, you know, just in collaboration, and I'm sure there's, you know, other, other ways of collaborating, not just in the Olympics. And I'm sure there's, um, you know, other, other ways of, of collaborating, not just in the, um, Olympics. Um, let me also just make mention, um, Councilmember Manning, thank you again for the Mother's Day event, the Women's Day event, um, the Business Expo. I mean, that was huge and that, um, you know, took a lot of time. And it's, and it was, um, really, really, um, I really saw just the excitement, just not in the attendees, but just how grand it was. So thank you for that and your work and your volunteers. Um, I want to make mention that, you know, I don't know how many of you go down, um, El Segundo in Crenshaw, but the liquor store has a new face on it. It's the facade program that our city has offered. I, I go down every morning, uh, in that area and it's just amazing how quickly it's come, uh, it's coming up. And, uh, look forward to when they have the grand opening, the ribbon cutting there. So thank you Business Connect and those that are helping businesses to improve, um, their storefronts, but more importantly, bring presents, um, that is inviting for many, not just, uh, you know, the past, but what it, what it brings as a new. Um, I also want to, um, make mention on a couple of things here that we did tonight. Um, and, and, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm really surprised, again, here we go. Um, you know, I've never seen a, uh, organization such as Telehealth being hit so hard with regards to negativity. Um, I've never seen this happen in my history of sitting here on the council. I've never seen an organization that has to, has had to require a committee to be put together to, um, address it, let alone make it, make it sure that it's operating efficient. I've never seen such hate and negativity towards this organization coming from individuals that don't even have an opportunity to meet with them or understand who they are. But more importantly, um, they've been with the city since twenty twenty, providing services and programs to our police, to residents here in Hawthorne, to nonprofit organizations, to our, um, Homeless Intake Center, Dulce, um, to our, um, Bridge of Hope Housing. Uh, I could go on and on. And they were just recently used for the fires that just occurred. And, uh, that's not even in our jurisdiction. However, they're willing, uh, to do just about anything to assist anyone. And there's still a lot of folks that are, uh, going through, um, really hard times with regards to the fires and with regards to just being homeless. Um, it's not coming out of our general fund. It's not monies that is coming out of any of our programs or services that we offer here in our city. It's monies that's being generated through businesses that are given back to the communities. And when the cannabis programs came in, that's exactly what we were, we were discussing. Monies that were ultimately given to the community when, um, there was a need for us. And so I don't understand the, um, the pushback. It's not just today. It's the presenters that come here and speak upfront. And it's their right. It's their, it's their, you know, prerogative. But if you listen very carefully, it's a, it, it's collusion. They're colluding to bring down an organization that offers a service. And there's really no need for it. Um, these folks come when they're asked to come and present and speak and provide information about the organization over and over again. Uh, as much time as they come, it's like they still need more and more and more and more information. Again, I have never, in my years of sitting here of service, have seen an organization as Telehealth have to bend backwards and try to prove themselves. Um, this program, Telehealth, provides mental health services through third party. They're not the ones that are sitting there taking the meetings. They're the ones that are making connections to assure that the mental health needs are, um, given. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. Again, um, I hope that the next time they come, that they're, they're more, um, recognized for the work that they're doing and the efforts that they're making. And, uh, I think Vaughn, next time, um, they come, I think it's important not only that they've provide everything that they've already given us. Um, you know, um, I think this final time, since it's a contract, it's probably gonna be maybe their last, who knows? Um, that they provide us a number of services to, uh, that they deliver to residents here in Hawthorne. Uh, it's really hard to say residents because at the end of the day, we can't, um, equitably, uh, count homeless individuals. But when they're being called on by our police or they're being called on by businesses, when they're being called on by residents who see, you know, folks in, um, um, maybe having a, a, a breakdown or meltdown. Um, I wanna, I wanna see those numbers captured so that we could, from the time twenty twenty to current, um, the services that they've provided. And then I want you to also, uh, have them provide us for services that came from us outside the city that they've rendered aid to. Um, this includes, you know, the annual homeless count, to our homeless cleanups that we do, task force, uh, anything and everything. And, um, you know, we, we want to make sure that they're reporting collectively all the things that they've done. And then I want to circle back because, uh, I've been a member with Connect, Connecta Credit Union. I don't remember it being a, a federal bank. It's a credit union. Um, but I, I made mention of them a couple of weeks ago. Uh, they're really a great credit union and, um, they're right down the street on, um, off of Roche Crans and Supovida. Um, great people, great partnerships. So let's include them, um, in, in any of our efforts that we have with regards to sponsorships or things like this for city, city-driven Hawthorne Chamber-driven events. I think that's important. And then, um, lastly, I look forward to the new lineup of events that we're gonna be doing in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year and, uh, working again, um, with the Chamber of Commerce. Hopefully at this point, the Chamber of Commerce could do, um, you know, our, our, our city state of, state address. So maybe that's possible too. Since it's not gonna be any one person or council member, we could look for it as a, um, city event. And, uh, look forward to that. But everyone, thank you for your time, city department heads, everyone, for your efforts. I know it's late. Uh, again, can't say enough. Um, and thank you to the, the, those that come and sit here every day, every night to watch us and, uh, ultimately pray for us, which I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, uh, good evening, everyone, and thank you for listening to us at home. Uh, thank you all our city departments. Uh, guys are fantastic, doing outstanding job every day in our behalf. Uh, again, you know, congratulations to all our police officers that receive the Medal of Valor. Unfortunately, I was in Milwaukee, so I couldn't be there. But, uh, those are great events who attend to show that our police actually save lives every single day. So thank you for that. Just a quick reminder, actually, the Kuwanas and the Rotary Club is gonna have their own, um, recognition of police and fire on June tenth at eleven AM at Memorial Center. So, uh, make sure you attend. Uh, I wanna say thank you to Captain Lane for the Sharp Performance Program, uh, because this is shows that again Hawthorne is on the number one when it comes to innovation. And then this is, uh, a well and, and health, well-being of our staff. And thank you for you guys to recognize that from the police to our, uh, city, uh, entire staff. And that is a great service that is commendable. So thank you very much. Uh, I just want to say, um, again, you know, thank you for the, uh, the Dodgers Dreams, Kershaw Field, sixty-four, sixty-five. Like I said, if you have a chance, just go see those fields because it will make you proud, um, that they invest in our city. And those fields look like a Dodger Stadium itself. So go look at them. I want to thank again to all of those who donate and came to the Hawthorne President's Council, the forty-third annual, uh, K nine dinner. Uh, so far we have raised eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars. So, and, uh, still collecting money probably until the end of July. So, uh, you can still send money. Um, on a quick note again, yes, the Bridge of Hope, you know, the second year. So I was, uh, able to go there and, and gave a little speech. But to see that, uh, you know, the, the joy on the face of those unhoused community people that are there trying to get their, even one guy said, I have a job interview after this lunch. So he's a homeless guy, but he did have a job interview to go to. So it show the progress that, that we are making. So, and believe it or not, you know, we, uh, gonna get more money from the Subicac through the, through the Laza and, and La Casa. So the, we may even receive about four hundred thousand dollar, uh, from that. And then, uh, and potentially a little more money coming, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. So good, good, good work of the, all the department that, from the Kimberly Mack Housing and Dulce, uh, you know, to apply for those monies, but they're coming. Uh, just want to say again, thank you Vaughn, uh, for rethinking about, um, resell those bonds that was gonna save us money and is gonna bring, uh, six hundred thousand dollars to the out school district. So that's a tremendous achievement. So thank you very much. Uh, quick note again, the Juneteenth is gonna be on June fourteen. And we will celebrate everybody Father's Day. We'll celebrate the Flag Day is June fourteen. And then Juneteenth, that is June nineteen, but it's a holiday. So we're doing it on Saturday, June fourteen, right in front of your city hall from eleven AM to four PM. We're gonna have live music, jumpers, car show, food trucks, arts and crafts, et cetera, et cetera. So show up. Um, actually, the other director that I want to, that's what I said, skipped my mind when I was talking about the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I want probably to give a director to Vaughn maybe because I know the Business Connect, it take a lot of effort, a lot of time from, from different head departments. So maybe something that maybe you can consolidate and make sure the Chamber of Commerce that will take in charge of the, all the ribbon cuttings of all the new business. So, and then, you know, the cities, all of us can be invited to go there. And because that way we used to do, we used to, Chamber of Commerce to do the ribbon cutting and then we would go there with a certificate or key to the city and we'd give it to them. So maybe go back to the old tradition. So, uh, because I know the Business Connect is taking a lot of staff time also. Okay? So on that note, I'm gonna say, uh, unfortunately, you know, I have the, next week from June third to the nine, I'll be in Boston. Uh, but I'll be back for the, for the council meeting and, uh, you guys have a great week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Um, just ahead, okay. We'll be having the Naleo Conference coming up. So we just need to make sure that we address that, that Tuesday at some point. So thank you all for being here. We appreciate all your feedback. Uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we move the city forward economically and, uh, through a lot of the things. And, um, I'm not gonna deny it that, uh, uh, council member and at the time Mayor Protem, Katrina Manning, did a lot of hard work. Okay? We need to acknowledge that. We need to acknowledge that. She put a lot of effort and skin in the game and she did a lot of great things. So I, I want to thank you and I know a lot, the rest, the rest of the council member colleagues that you have up here do thank you. Um, but, uh, well, there's no buts at all. It's just, uh, we just wanna, we're gonna be going in a different direction how we approach the, these things that we have. And it'll just give us a more of an opportunity to, uh, focus on some of the policies that we have here and just figure out how do we bring that money that we need to bring in, how, how we need to make some good decisions. And so that'll free us all up and I'm pretty sure we'll all be, uh, going all these same events and be able to enjoy seeing people happy and enjoying themselves. So, um, it's, uh, should provide some type of relief for us as well. Um, and for staff, as like, as we were mentioning, but, uh, I do want to thank you. Um, there's nothing really I'd like to say. It just, I just, it's a lot of, I don't know. Just so much back and forth going on in the Ukraine, Russia, then Palestine and Israel. And it just, uh, I just hope all that, you know, there's a speedy resolution to all of that. Okay? Because just a lot of innocent people are getting killed. So, uh, okay? So we hopefully, hopefully our leaders, our national leaders will resolve that and put, put an end to it and stop the politicking and just, uh, just stop the killings, man. There's just a lot of stuff going on. So I hope we all can pray on that. Um, that's it for me. Uh, I hope you guys have a good rest of your evening. This meeting is adjourned at nine oh one.